Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the May 4th meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. We did not have anyone wishing to address the board, so I'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. There were no new complex signatures presented, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items eight A through D. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That's approved. Onto the reports of the president. We have the Accessibility Services Update Report.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. My name is Megan Fisher. I'm the Vice President for Enrollment Management. And today, there you are, Nadine Jardy is one of our Student Success Advisors in our Student Success Center, and she is also our Accessibility Services Coordinator, and that's what she's going to be presenting on today. But before she does so, I just wanted to give you a quick update on our Bill Dakota Signing Day. I think you all should have received invitations today. We are awarding 142 students full ride scholarships this year, and 110 of those students are sponsored by 52 industry sponsors. So we have really good numbers, so I hope you can all make it.
And that's the highest ever.
All right. Hello. Thank you for welcoming me back to speak to you again and give you all in a little update on what's happening with Accessibility Services at Southeast Tech. As a reminder, just our office, the purpose of Accessibility Services is to ensure that we're providing our students with disabilities the opportunity to participate in their classroom activities and co-curricular activities with equal access as their peers through the provision of accommodations is our primary focus. So I am the Accessibility Services Coordinator, and then we also have another full-time staff, Ashley Vis, who serves as my assistant with accessibility, and she does our accessible testing, and she's also an assistant for enrollment management overall. So since I presented to you in the fall, I just wanted to provide a quick update on our spring numbers. So we had 78 students who were currently approved for accommodations throughout the course of the spring semester and as we headed into summer. Not all of those students are using summer accommodations, so those are our current numbers as we started summer heading into fall. 62 of the students in the spring used their accommodations during the semester in some capacity, so we have about 72% or 79% of students actively using their accommodations. Others, it was either they had said that they weren't sure they needed them, so they were going to try a semester on their own, or they hadn't responded back to us about whether or not they wanted their accommodations approved for the spring semester. We did have two fewer students than the fall 2021 semester, but still stayed very average with where we are at and consistent in our numbers of students that we served. I currently have about 26 students in the application phase for the fall semester to add to that 78 that we're currently serving. So we will have an increase in the fall semester, which is pretty common over the summer, that as we get new applicants, we're also seeing an increase in students applying for Accessibility Services. But I think some of the activities we've done this year that I'll describe as we go forward really helped to increase that number of students seeking out our office. And then finally on the side, 77% of our students did renew or began receiving their accommodations on the first day of the spring semester, which is a really great improvement for us in that proactivity of just having that contact with students and making sure that they have everything set up for them on that first day of the semester rather than legging things out as the semester went on. So our updates for the 2021-2022 school year, so things from the fall and spring semester, we did continue and we are continuing since our AAR days, our Academic Advising and Registration Days, started this spring. I have been pretty active in those days of informing students and their families about Accessibility Services. We have a table, we have our Accessibility Services information out so that students can access, and I probably have at least two to three parents and students with questions per registration day, which is great just to have that communication with them as they're coming into school. We also hosted the 2022 Catch the Wave event with the Transition Services Liaison Project. They hosted across the state of South Dakota at different colleges, and this year for our region, Southeast Tech was the college hosting it. And we had over 140 students with disabilities, their parents or their school providers, their, you know, teachers or counselors that came with them to the event, to learn about how to attend college as a student with a disability and what's that like. They got to hear from different colleges, including Southeast Tech. They got to hear from some of our students and alumni. So it was a really great event that fostered, I think, a lot of interest as well in coming to Southeast. We also increased our outreach to students throughout the semester. Again, that proactive contact throughout the semester to remind students of, you know, actively using their accommodations, getting their testing set up, things like that. So just had greater contact with our students. We also increased trainings and collaboration with our faculty and staff throughout the last year in educating on accessibility and accommodations in the classroom, as well as some one-on-one consulting. I had a lot more outreach from faculty about just questions about students with accommodations and that dual relationship so that we could figure out what was best for the student. We also had some increased contact with our local high schools. I attended a lot of IEP meetings this past spring, I'd say about 10 to 15, to talk to students who were interested in Southeast Tech, talk to students who are interested in college in general about accommodations at Southeast. So that was really great, and I expect that to continue after forming some relationships with our high school counselors. And we also did a lot with that addition of Ashley as an assistant in our office. She did a really great job of modifying our databases, organizing them in a way so that we can have more efficient tracking of our students and tracking their accommodations. So our upcoming goals for, this should say, 2022-2023 school year is to really continue that high school interaction and increase it. A lot of the contact I've had is with those Sioux Falls-specific schools, but to really broaden out to some of our surrounding towns where we have a lot of students who filter in from as well, to attend those IEP meetings and hopefully attend them earlier for students. I was seeing that we were, you know, I was attending a lot of meetings for seniors and who were a little late in that admissions process and getting them really going, so maybe starting that earlier if we have students who know as sophomores or juniors that they might want to come to Southeast Tech. Also increase our participation in new faculty training. Ashley and I are working this summer on preparing a faculty and staff training program within our My Tech Learning Management System so that faculty and staff can go through a self-paced training on accommodations, on what higher ed requirements are for accommodations, what that looks like, as well as some guidance on making online coursework and their online pages in My Tech Accessible. So we're hoping to develop that over the summer with work with academics and enrollment management in the fall to implement that so that we can have new staff and faculty hopefully all trained by the end of next year. We're also still working on developing those efficient tracking methods. We'll be switching from, we use SharePoint currently, but we'll hopefully be switching this summer to our Onbase system, which is more confidential and more secure for housing our student records. And this summer, we will also be increasing our community partnerships. We will be having two summer camps, one with the Service to the Bind and Visually Impaired in the end of June, or that one is in the middle of June, excuse me, where we'll work with students that work with that agency on college preparedness, just sharing with them what college is like, hopefully getting a few interested in attending. And then our bigger camp will be June 28th and 29th. We'll have a group of about 30 students from across the region attending to hear about how to prepare for college, how to fill out college applications, what is the differences between high school and college in terms of accommodations, and really get them familiar with that process. And then finally, we're working with that STRIVE program as well that we'll be doing the summer camp with to hopefully develop Junior Day for students with disabilities specifically who are interested in Southeast Tech to visit and have a day for themselves on campus. So thank you guys for allowing me to share an update with you on what we are working on currently, and I would open it to questions from any of you.
Well, I just thank you for all you do for our students. As a parent of a student who at college has had to use accommodations, it's just really important for the success of those students to have those resources at their disposal. And every student has different needs, so being able to, you know, think and help them through that process really greatly appreciate that and that you're doing that.
Thank you.
And thank you to Megan and you for all you do as well. And Megan, we'll, I'll get back to you on whether or not we're able to attend, so thank you. Do you have a motion to acknowledge Accessibility Services Update Report?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged.
Thank you.
Onto State Tech Board.
Hey, good afternoon. Just want to make sure I'm set up correctly here before I launch in. Okay. I'm Nick Wendell. I serve as the Executive Director of the South Dakota Board of Technical Education, President Mickelson, and members of the board. Thanks for an opportunity to have a conversation this afternoon about some of the areas of focus in which the board really is targeting over the next couple of months and year as we kind of get our feet under us as a state board. I wanted to come before you to give you a kind of a high-level overview of the work that we're doing, a little background on the board, and then talk about, I think, the important role that our technical colleges play in ensuring that students have access to post-secondary education in South Dakota that prepares them appropriately for some of the workforce demands we know exist in our state. You're all well familiar with the technical colleges in South Dakota, but the State Board of Technical Education was created in 2017 to provide state-level support and oversight to our technical colleges. For more than five decades, South Dakota has been home to four dynamic and high-performing technical colleges. And throughout most of our history, that was an exclusive relationship with their local governing boards and local school districts. And in 2017, we began operating in a more shared governance model where there's a state board that provides support and oversight, the State Board of Technical Education, in partnership with boards like yourselves. In 2017, then-Governor Dugard appointed nine members to the inaugural Board of Technical Education with some consideration given to the different geographic regions of the state they represented and also the industries in which they represented. And those folks began their work in the summer of 2017. In the very late days of 2017, they took a gamble and hired me as their first executive director, and I've been in my role now for a couple of years. And as I noted, really got our feet under us now, and I think have started to normalize our operations in terms of standing up a state-level education agency and identify the ways that we can provide kind of state-level support and oversight to a growing and diverse technical college system. You can see the current composition of our board on your screens, and we continue to do work together. We'll convene in the summer planning retreat at the end of June where we'll really dig into some of the areas that I'll share with you all today and attach some desired outcomes and some measurable goals to each of these areas. I also wanted to provide, before I launch into the areas of focus, just a high-level look at enrollment in our technical colleges. So on this chart, the blue line at the top is our unduplicated enrollment number. So that's a unique enrollment number. All students engaged in learning at one of our technical colleges, that's full and part-time and dual-credit enrollment. The orange line at the bottom are full and part-time students with those dual-credit numbers dropped out. We're always looking for opportunities to bring more folks under the tent and grow enrollment. But I will tell you that relative to what we're seeing nationally, we are satisfied and feel somewhat fortunate to have pretty stable enrollment in recent years. The public two-year college environment was the sector of post-secondary education that was most dramatically impacted through COVID-19. So enrollment in public two-year colleges has declined by more than 15% since 2019 and more than 20% in the last decade. South Dakota is fortunate to be home to four high-performing technical colleges, so we've had pretty relatively stable enrollment in that same time period with some increases. In the most recent academic year, we did see a decline in full and part-time students, but our presidents have got optimistic eyes toward the fall. And again, relative to where we're seeing the public two-year space perform in enrollment, we feel good about relatively stable enrollment across the system. I have referenced kind of zeroing in on a couple of areas of focus as a board, and that's really how we're building our work and how I kind of want to organize our conversation this afternoon are on those three areas of focus: attainment, affordability, and alignment. I think we all could dig in deep and talk in depth about each of these topics, but in the essence of time, I wanted to just highlight how we define attainment, affordability, and alignment in our system and how we built some priorities around each of those topics. First of all, in terms of attainment, we really define that as a priority to increase the number of South Dakotans that have access to high-quality post-secondary credentials. I'll just start by demonstrating why that is so vital for the state of South Dakota and then unpack for a bit what is the current state of post-secondary attainment in South Dakota. So as recently as 2016, about a third of all jobs in the American workforce could be completed with a high school diploma or less. So the majority of jobs in our workforce require some type of post-secondary credential. So that is an industry-recognized certificate, a diploma, a two, a four-year degree, a professional, or a graduate degree. Some type of credential that would demonstrate experience, expertise, and skills that you've developed to do about two-thirds of all jobs in our workforce. But you could still complete about a third of jobs in the workforce without a post-secondary credential. Projections indicate that by the close of this decade, close to 90% of all jobs in the American workforce will require some type of post-secondary credential. So the number of jobs in the American workforce over the next decade that you can complete with no post-secondary credential is shrinking, which of course leads to the next question, how well positioned and prepared are adults in South Dakota to meet the workforce expectations of the next couple of years? And that brings us to our conversation about post-secondary attainment. 49.2% of all adults in South Dakota have some type of post-secondary credential, and that's an all-in number. That's certificates, diplomas, two- and four-year degrees, professional and graduate degrees. So just south of the 51.9% national average, 49.2% of South Dakota adults between the ages of 25 and 64 have some type of post-secondary credential. You can see on the chart on the screen how those break down. The blue slices represent what type of post-secondary credential half of our adult population has. The orange slices represent the other half of the population that have no type of post-secondary credential. So for those of us that have been working in the education sphere, this probably isn't a huge surprise, right? Because we know that each year, somewhere between 28 and 30, sometimes north of 30% of students that graduate from a high school in South Dakota do not continue to pursue any type of post-secondary credential within 18 months of their high school graduation. So let's say 9,500 students graduate from a high school in South Dakota this spring. 18 months from now, 2,500 or more of them will not have pursued any type of post-secondary credential. So they'll be crossing their 20th birthday without having earned any credits toward any type of post-secondary credential. And that number compounds on itself. So we add another 2,500 young South Dakotans that have no type of post-secondary credential every year to that pile. We know from a technical institute, a technical college perspective, we can't afford to leave 2,500 young South Dakotans on the sidelines. We've got to find ways to bring more of them into the fold and accessing some type of valuable post-secondary credential. I think there would be value in doing a bit more unpacking of that 49.2% number and what it really means in a state like South Dakota. So in 62 of 66 counties in South Dakota, the overwhelming majority of counties in South Dakota, that number's actually south of 49.2%. It probably won't surprise you that credential holders tend to be clustered around population centers in our state. So counties like Minnehaha and Lincoln County, Clay County, and Brookings County lift our state-level average. But in 62 of 66 counties, attainment rates among adults are actually south of 49.2%. And in 33 of 66 counties, a full half of all counties in South Dakota, attainment rate among adults is actually less than 40%. And many of those are rural counties, a distance from a college campus or a university. Less than 40% of adults have any type of post-secondary credential, which will make rural access vitally important. I think traditionally speaking, in the world of technical education, we don't think of distance education as necessarily in our wheelhouse because we think of technical education as being delivered ideally in person in learning laboratories with instructors that can help you work on equipment that would simulate what you will find in the workplace. I will say that in the spring of 2020, COVID forced us to get better at that and flex some muscles that we don't traditionally work out in diversifying hybridized curriculum, ensuring that we could do skill development and skill testing with community and industry partners throughout the state when students couldn't be on our campus and we didn't know how long it'd be until they could return. So we're getting better in that area. But if we're going to grow that attainment number to better align with what the workforce demands will be over the next couple of years, we're going to have to find a way to scale up and credential up underskilled and under-credential adults in rural communities and counties throughout South Dakota, and I think our technical colleges are going to be a key part of that. Another opportunity population when we think about growing attainment rates in South Dakota are non-traditional learners. So if we know that, you know, 28 to 30% of our traditionally aged students are not pursuing post-secondary education right after high school, we also know that there are a lot of South Dakotans that are 30 and 35 and 40 and beyond that do not have the type of post-secondary credential necessary to fill jobs in our workforce. The reality in our technical colleges is that in two of our four technical colleges, close to a third or more of our students are already non-traditional aged. So at Southeast Tech here in Sioux Falls and at Western Dakota and Rapid City, a third or more of our students are already 25 years old or older, which means we've got to build the types of programs and curriculum and support services that can accommodate non-traditional age students that may have certain barriers between enrollment and persistence to graduation. Many of these folks are working full or part-time while they're pursuing credits and courses. They've got family obligations, like children in their home or aging parents. They may be commuter students because they put down roots in a community a distance from our campuses. So the way we service and build programs to ensure we can find success with non-traditional students sometimes costs the institution a bit more. We've got to be creative. We've got to diversify and hybridize our curriculum and our delivery and our scheduling in certain ways. In particular, if we're going to grow that non-traditional student population at a couple of our campuses that currently aren't serving a wide swath of non-traditional students, are there ways to ensure we can bring more of them into our technical colleges to earn the types of credentials they'll need, either to continue to move up in their careers or find entry-level positions in certain fields in our state? So when we think about opportunity populations to address attainment realities in our state, I think it will become I think it will become through strengthening the bridge between high schools and technical colleges for traditional age students, creating dynamic programs that better serve non-traditional age students, and growing access in rural South Dakota. It's going to take, you know, growing numbers in all of those sectors and some others, which kind of transitions into our other areas of focus. One of them is affordability. For us, we define that as ensuring that technical education in South Dakota is affordable. I think post-secondary education in general is having a real reckoning around affordability and a return on investment. I think we can do an effective job in the realm of technical education in demonstrating a potential return on investment for a credential earned. But we've got to find opportunities to make it viable for folks in our state to access high-quality credentials through our technical colleges. And I wanted to bring some good news because I think there's some examples of ways we're doing that in South Dakota that are truly kind of building templates in the region and in the nation. One of them is a program I know you're well familiar with, which is the Build Dakota Scholarship Program. The most recent cohort had 426 Build Dakota Scholars throughout the state. Seventh year of the program launched with $50 million from the state of South Dakota and T. Denny Sanford. That 426 number joined more than 1,900 Build Dakota Scholars throughout the state of South Dakota that had participated in the program over the last seven years. And at Southeast Technical College, you've just heard some recent updates about what the next class of the Build Dakota Scholarship will look like, and it's going to be another all-time number for the institution. I also want to talk about the success we see in Build Dakota Scholars. Cohort six, the sixth year of the program, those students had an 89.9% retention rate, which means that 89.9% of Build Dakota Scholars that started in the fall of 2020 came back to us in the fall of 2021, which dramatically, of course, increases the likelihood that they will ultimately persist to graduation and earn a credential. I think a number that's also impressive in reference to the Build Dakota Scholarship Program is 307. Of the 426 scholars in Cohort seven, 307 of them had an industry partner, which meant that there was an organization or a company or a community in the state that said, I not only want you to go to work in the state of South Dakota after you graduate, I want you to come to work for me. And I'm so invested in you as a future professional that I'll pay 50% of your scholarship to make that a reality. And you heard some of the numbers at Southeast in terms of the number of industry partnerships that are being fostered. And that's really a way that that program has expanded. It allows us to stretch the scholarship dollars and it allows us to build a relationship with industry and that student really early on in their academic program. I should also note that the majority of our Build Dakota Scholars graduate with little or no student debt because they've gotten a full-ride scholarship. And what we know is that individuals that go into the workforce with little or no student debt are more likely to buy homes in their community, more likely to start families in their community, volunteer in that community. But perhaps most importantly for the state of South Dakota, their children are more likely to earn a post-secondary credential a generation from now. I think an investment in a program like the Build Dakota Scholarship is a long-range plan for the state of South Dakota when we think about attainment and affordability. Another way that we've brought affordability to our students is through our state appropriation. You know well that in our technical colleges, there's really two drivers of revenue. It comes through a state appropriation or it comes through tuition and fees generated from students. And so when we can grow our state appropriation to meet the needs, it means that we can reduce some of the burden or new burden that would be placed on students. This year, we received a $2.6 million ongoing funding line item through a state appropriation designed to allow us to increase faculty and staff salaries by 6% while freezing our tuition. And that's true across the board at every technical college in South Dakota. A tremendous late-in-the-session partnership that allows us to really address what is an important need to continue investing in high-quality faculty and staff at our technical colleges without burdening students with the cost of that continued investment. Another win in the most recent legislative session was more than $17 million in one-time funding that will come to our technical colleges to invest in important facility upgrades. At Southeast Technical College, that will mean a tremendous investment in the Health Sciences Clinical Simulation Center. In the Zeal Center adjacent to the Southeast Tech campus that you're all well familiar with, the state will contribute $4.5 million in one-time funding to purchase simulation equipment. I think that's a really phenomenal example of a public and private partnership that was really powerful and gave us, I think, a real strong case when we were in peer advocating for those dollars, that the city of Sioux Falls and forward Sioux Falls was committed to the project, Avera Health and Sanford Health were committed to the project in renovating the facility. And if the state could contribute to the equipment, we can grow the capacity in the four Health Sciences programs that will be affected by that facility by more than 150 seats. So there's a real tangible impact of that commitment in growing a high-demand workforce in that field. One other program that I know you're familiar with, and I won't dig deep on, but I wanted to provide some high-level numbers, is the Dual Credit Program. Certainly a way that we can create affordability and access for students in high schools throughout South Dakota. 1,284 11th and 12th graders in South Dakota enrolled in a dual-credit program at one of our technical colleges in the last academic year. We've continued to see that program grow over its seven-year lifespan in South Dakota. And each year, more and more students take advantage of dual-credit courses at one of our technical colleges. But I do think that there are ways that we can target certain populations within that program to expand its impact. We did a comprehensive study of the Dual Credit Program in 2019 with the Department of Education and the Board of Regents. We identified a couple of populations that are underrepresented in terms of dual credit. So 11th and 12th graders, 28.8% of 11th and 12th graders at high schools in South Dakota come from economically disadvantaged students. 16% of participants in our state's dual-credit program come from an economically disadvantaged family. So we understand that there's a misrepresentation in terms of those that have economic disadvantages. We have really focused over the last year on an opportunity to connect with our local boards when we've been in communities. We were able to meet with you all in December prior to our board meeting. We did the same thing in Mitchell in April, had an opportunity to sit down with their board in an informal setting and talk about opportunities for partnership. We talked about the Dual Credit Program and participation in Mitchell area high schools in that program. And we zeroed in on this reality, that for a lot of families, $150 for a three-credit course is still a pretty impossible barrier. And I think that's truer today than it was in 2015 when we established that cost structure in addition to some other costs that would be associated, like books or potential equipment or tools. So the Mitchell Education Association, within probably five days of that conversation, has got back and said, we could find some private dollars. On a macro level, $150 per student isn't a huge investment for our organization to provide access for those students. And so we had heard from the Mitchell Educational Association within a week that they were creating an opportunity for economically disadvantaged students in their district to have better opportunities to take advantage of dual credit. And I hope that it can move the needle in terms of ensuring that, you know, those that are participating in the program maybe look more like the cross-section of students we see in our high schools. The same is true for students of color. About 23% of South Dakota 11th and 12th graders identify as a race other than white. Only 7.9% of our dual-credit students identify as a race other than white. And so we know that students of color are underrepresented in dual-credit participation. We know that dual credit greatly increases the likelihood that those folks will matriculate to a post-secondary institution. If they earn three credits, it moves up incrementally, six, nine, up to 12 credits. It greatly increases the likelihood that they'll come to college, that they will persist to graduation and earn a credential. So it's a difference maker. Our state continues to invest in the program. But if we can continue to build opportunities for folks, I think we can move the needle in terms of who's participating in dual-credit programs in South Dakota. The last area of focus that I wanted to touch on and that we're really targeting is alignment. And for us, that means preparing learners and graduates for meaningful employment or continued education opportunities. And it's just vitally important that our academic programs align well with the needs of industry, but also provide opportunity for students to continue their education if they so choose. I'm going to start first talking about graduate placement. I'm really proud and our institutions are deeply proud of the fact that 88% of place graduates from a technical college in South Dakota were either employed or continued their education in South Dakota. We are public post-secondary institutions designed to be of service to the state of South Dakota. So if we create opportunities for students to put down roots in South Dakota or continue their education in South Dakota, I think we're doing our job well. I wanted to highlight a couple of fields where we see real high-performing placement rates. Each of those career clusters that I noted on the screen are those that have north of 90% placement rate. I'm excited also to share that over the next year, we'll be strengthening our placement data collection and reporting structure. So our current placement reports really rely upon data that's collected by the institutions within six months of graduation, which is really insightful and gives us a great sense of where our students go immediately after graduation. But we're partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau on a post-secondary employment initiative that will track students three and five and 10 years post-graduation. So we'll have a better sense of where students end up 10 years after graduating from a technical college. Did they go on and earn an additional credential? Are they still living in South Dakota? What wage are they commanding? Are they in a supervisory role? Some of that data, we're starting to see already. It's embargoed by the U.S. Census Bureau, so I can't share it with you just yet. But we're hoping in the next couple of months, we're able to share a more longitudinal study of where graduates from our technical colleges end up. And we're seeing encouraging signs that many of them are reinvesting in South Dakota. The other piece of alignment is how well our academic programs are aligned with other post-secondary education programs in the state of South Dakota. So I had opened our conversation by noting that a chief focus for the Board of Technical Education since our inception has been to shift the public perception around the value of technical education. And I think one way we do that is to shift the conversation. For too long, I think we've really had a conversation with an either-or proposition to say, either you will go to a technical college or you will go to a university. I think if we provide opportunities for students and families to broaden that conversation to say, you could go to a technical college and if your life dictates it someday, you can go to a university. And you can have some confidence that the credits you've earned in a two-year environment in many cases will follow you into a four-year degree. So we've worked closely with our partners at the Board of Regents. Dr. Maher and I have a great working relationship, our leadership. Both our presidents and our academic chiefs have been collaborating with our regental partners. In fact, the 10 chief academic officers from the six universities and the four technical colleges in South Dakota convened in peer for two days in April to talk about opportunities to collaborate and build stronger bridges between academic programs and post-secondary institutions in South Dakota. And that's really powerful and exciting. We currently have 180 program-to-program articulation agreements between our technical colleges and our universities. We have a comprehensive general education articulation agreement, which we re-upped in 2021. We've got stronger articulation today than perhaps at any other time in the history of our state between technical colleges and our regental partners. And on average, in those 188 program-to-program articulation agreements, 32 credits will transfer for a student that has earned a credential at a technical college. So there's a real tangible positive outcome for a student that might be considering at some point in the future, taking that two-year degree and turning it into a four-year degree. This is another area where I think a more longitudinal and dynamic placement report will help us to tell that story better. We know that about 9% of our students within six percent, or within six months of graduation, are continuing their education. But I think if we tracked students three and five and 10 years, we would find out that many of them will continue working in their field and add credentials along the way and add opportunity along the way. And so I'm anxious to be able to track that data and quantify it for you all. That brings us back just to that center point, which are those three areas of focus: attainment, affordability, and alignment. That's kind of a high-level look at why we think it's vitally important that we center our efforts around some of these topics. And in the coming weeks and months, we'll start to unpack some real measurable goals around the work we hope to do in these areas. I'd stand by for any questions.
Well, first, I want to thank you for helping make the equalization of Senate Bill 1182, I believe I had the right number, for all the technical colleges for the salary cap. That's really helped Southeast Tech. So appreciate your efforts on that to help our institution. I did have a question. Is Western Dakota the only institution that has separated from their school board? Okay, I wondered if that was still the case.
Yeah, they had created a several, a separate, what we call LEA, so a separate agency that they function as a Board of Trustees and now provides local-level oversight. They're about a year into that new structure.
I think one of the new concepts that has started since I've been on the board is the ability to, like you said, instead of thinking, do you want to go to tech school or go to college, is how you can continue on. You can start with one and maybe get your feet wet and see if that's for you. And then once you have those credits, you can go on. And I don't really think that was, I mean, that wasn't a thing back when I went to school, which was not that long ago, by the way.
Same here.
And so I just think that that's awesome because there are some students who just really don't know or they're a little intimidated by the college environment or the atmosphere or being away from home or whatever that might be. And so it's a great opportunity for them to try that out. And I think, you know, trying to get some of those juniors and sophomores even out to the campus to see those things can really make that more realistic to them when they set foot on it and say, oh, this is something that I, that I could do. I know you talked about the rural part, too. And I think about, I think it was the nursing, like bus or the van or whatever, truck, you know? And so when you think about rural communities, you know, can you have a hybrid where you have a truck that travels and brings them the simulation equipment or the hands-on thing? So during the week, they have most days of doing that online coursework where they're, you know, everyone's kind of remote, but part of the class. But then maybe there's a day each week where the truck kind of makes the rounds and they get, that's their opportunity to get that hands-on. So I have a lot of family that lives in small town, and it is hard for them. When you've grown up in a small town, the thought of leaving is intimidating. They don't even like to think about driving in Sioux Falls, let alone moving or coming, you know? And so there's a lot less education beyond high school that happens in those places. And I think it would, it would do those communities a great service to be able to have, you know, future banking managers, future post office, grocery store, you know, like the things that are going to keep those communities alive as well because it's a reinvestment in their people who now have the skills to start new businesses and things like that. So, so important and especially over the next, you know, few years here as, as we have so many rural communities and so many that are kind of fading. And the workforce is obviously there, the needs for the workforce are there. And so how can the technical colleges get kind of a leg up on those of the, we've all experienced, they're a lot more adaptable, a lot more quick to change than a university regental system is. And so it's a great opportunity. And I think if we look at it in that way, as it's an opportunity, that we have the right mindset to kind of find some solutions to that and benefit the communities and the universities or the colleges as well.
I think you're exactly right. If I could just say a couple of words of response on that topic. You know, we know that in, in half of our counties in South Dakota, less than 40% of our adult population currently have post-secondary credentials. And many of those folks have a whole lot of working years in front of them. If you spend some time on the Lumina Foundation Stronger Nation Report, which is where that data comes from, it's census-level data county by county, and you can toggle between all adults, so 25 to 64-year-olds, and just 25 to 34-year-olds. And in South Dakota, the numbers don't change much. So I think we have some conventional wisdom in our minds that it's older adults in our population that are under-credential, but younger adults have had better access. And that's not true in our state. It's not bearing out in the numbers in a lot of our counties. And so there are a whole lot of them that either traditional age students, getting a jumpstart on the ability to earn credit or be exposed to technical education, or younger adults who have a whole lot of working years ahead of them, having some access to post-secondary credentials could be really powerful and life-changing. But those are folks who may have mortgages or kids or roots put down in those communities. The likelihood that they will relocate to where one of our four campuses is pretty minimal. So how do we create access? And I commend President Griggs and Southeast Tech for partnering with industry throughout the state to create some of that access. Their partnership with Huron Regional Medical Center is a great example. Huron would be defined as an education desert in our state. There aren't post-secondary opportunities within a close enough radius to Huron. How can we affordably partner with a major employer in that area to create opportunity not just for Huron, but for Westington Springs and Woonsocket and Iroquois and, you know, lots of outlying communities in that area? Western Dakota is doing some of that as well. They're building some smaller piloted health sciences programs in Phillip, in Whitewood, in the Northern Black Hills. So if we can find a way to not have to invest a tremendous amount of capital in those locations until we know whether or not there are actually like long-term opportunities to bring students into the program, I think we can make it worthwhile to invest in those programs and partner with industries to create access. And maybe we do it in, you know, in Western Dakota's case, maybe we provide opportunity in Phillip for four years. And then we've, we've hit the ceiling and matured to the point where there won't be more folks. We can't build a cohort there. So we move on to Murdo or Chamberlain or someplace that We can't build a cohort there, so we move on to Murdo or Chamberlain or someplace else that is still in that region.
There's, in the K-12 region, there are cooperatives of CTE academies where they share equipment and so forth. So it'd be, maybe that'd be a way to research that, partnering with those already existing cooperative structures in the 12 and under high school and partnering that at the technical school area. Because just like you said, that's what they're doing right now with the equipment. So it'd be great to do that.
We had a really dynamic joint meeting with the Board of Education Standards in Mitchell in April and talked about strengthening that bridge between, in particular rural high schools and South Dakota technical colleges and zeroed in on CTE opportunities that already exist and how do we take that infrastructure and stretch it a bit.
Any other questions, suggestions? Thank you, Nick, so much for your report. And do I have a motion to acknowledge the State Tech Board report?
Don't move.
Second. I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Our next meeting will be July 11th, because of the holiday week, the first week of July. And Dr. Griggs?
President Mickelson, members of the board, just wanted to say a quick thank you again for Nick making the trek over this afternoon to share some of that information with you. He visited with our campus community during our IE Day, and it's impressive data. There is a lot to unpack there. Very, very impressive data as far as the retention rates, the placement rates, you know, articulation and transfers growing. And he is very correct. Actually, just last week, I think the National Student Clearinghouse published some data about the spring semester and again indicated a five, I think it was a 5.4% decline overall in higher education last, just this past spring. And universities were about 3%, 3.4%, 3.7% down, and the two years were higher as far as the drop in enrollment. So I think we're working very hard and really encouraged. Do want to say thank you to Megan for her leadership with that team and that Build Dakota effort. Also, just to let you know, Paula Hox, as our career services person, did some great work championing those industry scholarships and those opportunities. And she unfortunately is leaving Southeast Tech and going to USD and pursuing some other opportunities there. So just want to acknowledge her really strong work in that regard also. But quickly, just to mention, Nick has been a real pleasure to work with during my time here at Southeast Tech. And a lot of the credit, I think, in terms of the funding for the ZEAL project, he was instrumental in that and being in the legislature and lobbying for us continually through that process, the 6% salary increase that he mentioned. Again, that came up very late in the session, and Nick was able to pull all of the texts together, and we're very fortunate to have that increase at no additional cost to our students. And I think that's what's really outstanding for our students as well. And as President Mickelson mentioned, something very impactful for Southeast, Nick helped champion the cause, I think, of Southeast and to have a more equitable funding formula for 1182 funding, which has now changed. So just want to thank him again for all of his help and support for Southeast Tech. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I have a motion second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.